Dear Mayor and Father, we thank you for this day in the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make our decisions. This is the regular meeting of the Noonan City Council, August the 25th, 2020. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of August the 11th, 2020 before you all entertain a motion when we adopt those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion is second, we adopt the minutes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda this evening are several appointments to boards and commissions. The first is an appointment to the Noonan Youth Activities, Mr. Krickko.
Next meeting, please.
Alright, thank you. The next is an appointment to the Convention Center Authority. Ms. Jenkins is not in attendance this evening, so that's the next agenda. Mr. Krickko, back to you with the Cultural Arts Commission, please.
I'd like to reappoint Ms. Tracy Brooks.
Second.
Motion is second, we reappoint Tracy Brooks to the Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next, Mr. Alexander on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes, sir. Next agenda, please.
Alright, thank you. And the next, Ms. Jenkins is absent again, so on the next agenda. Are there, are any appointments this evening, although it's not on the agenda, to the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission?
I have an appointment. Dr. Pamela Johnson.
Alright, yes, sir. Second.
Second.
Motion is second, appoint Dr. Pamela Johnson to the Farmer Street Cemetery Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. Motion carried. We have two reports in the, on your agenda tonight for information only. This is a report from the Cultural Arts Commission, we appreciate their service and hard work. And also a report from the Convention Center Authority, we also appreciate their dedication and hard work. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
I don't have something, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything this evening, we'll move on to new business. This is a request from the DDA to close North and South Court Square to host Market Day event on September the 5th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, grant the request of the DDA to close North and South Court Square to hold Market Day event on September the 5th, 2020. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next item is an information only, rezoning request for RZ 2020-3, Turnstone Group LLC and KM Homes for 10.120 acres located on Noonan Crossing Boulevard East. This is the tax parcel numbers 086502105 and 0865021011 and 086502012. This is for information only, no action needed. The next is also an information only. This is also a zoning request for RZ 2020-04, the Turnstone Group LLC, for 2.7 acres located on Diplomat Parkway, a portion of tax parcel 09805052001. Also for information only, no action needed. The next is consideration of release of a request for proposal for the construction of the pickleball facility. Do you have this in your agenda? We have members here tonight that can answer questions, staff and also construction companies if you have any, but otherwise I'll.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the request of the release for the, request for proposal for the construction of pickleball facility, which means they'll get that out and bring it back to us for our approval for the construction contract. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next is consideration of a guaranteed maximum price contract amendment. This is amendment to program services contract and overall project budget for CJ Smith Park and Picket Field at Lynch Park Renovations. Again, there are people here who can answer questions of council, if you have any. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion is second, we approve both requests. And ask for a discussion or questions? Anyone? I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. Under unfinished business, consideration for approval, of approval for consultant services for professional engineering design services for sidewalks on Jackson Street and Sprayberry Road. This is in your agenda? Questions of staff or anyone else here this evening from council? Seeing no one want to ask a question, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second, we grant, are approved as presented. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. This is a rezoning request, RZ 2020-02, Inline Communities LLC for 22.007 acres located on McBride Street, tax parcel N58001002, 90 Sprayberry Road, tax parcel N36015, a portion of 92 Sprayberry Road, tax parcel N36014, and tax parcel N58006011, and the consideration of ordinance. This is a public hearing that I'm gonna open at this time on this rezoning request. Mr. Cole, how are you this evening?
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good. Do you have a report from the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, I sure do.
Thank you.
Inline Communities has applied for the rezoning of 22.007 acres located at McBride Street, of which 13.064 acres are zoned heavy industrial and 8.386 acres are zoned RU7. 90 Sprayberry Road, which is zoned RU7, a portion of 92 Sprayberry Road, which is zoned RU7, and tax parcel N58006011, which is also zoned RU7. The request is rezone the subject property from IHV, which is heavy industrial, and RU7 to RML, one of the multifamily categories, for the purpose of constructing 103 townhouse-style condominium units on private roads. RML allows for six dwelling units per acre. The rezoning site plan shows a proposed site density of 4.68 units per acre. And also, one detail is, the applicant expects the price points to be in the mid-200s. Regarding proposed features, exterior facades will be substantially clad in a variety of high-quality materials, including siding examples such as board and batten, brick and stone. Townhome units will have varied facades that could include different architectural accents, design elements, and color schemes to create visual diversity within the residential development. All townhomes will be a maximum of three stories. All driveways will be long enough to accommodate the length of a vehicle to be parked as well. The amenities will include a minimum of a pool, cabana with restrooms, a dog park, and mulched walking trails. There will be 17 buildings the development will be housed in, with each building housing between four and eight condo units. These numbers could actually alter somewhat after the required engineering is completed. The applicant has indicated that the attached homes will be a minimum of 1,300 heated square feet. The subject property is located approximately 0.138 miles from an RML zone development, Jefferson Grove, which was constructed in 2018, recently, and approximately 0.59 miles from two other RML zone developments that are adjacent to each other, Preston Mill Apartment Homes constructed in the late 90s and Jefferson Point Apartment Homes constructed in the early 1990s. All three of these nearby properties are on Jefferson Street and are zoned RML, which is the request tonight. Staff has completed an assessment of each of the eight required standards, and I'll give you a quick summary of each. Is the proposed use suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent and nearby property? Staff says yes, the proposed use is suitable. Will the proposed use adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property? And staff suggested the adverse effect is minimal due to the collector road access, the engineering study that will be required of the applicant, and the implementation of needed on-site traffic improvements. So that's a positive checkmark there as well. Are there substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be currently used as a zone? And staff suggested, excuse me, the subject property could be, in fact, used as currently zoned. Next. Will the proposed use cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities or services, including to but not limited to street schools, water or sewer utilities, and police or fire protection? And staff suggested, as with all development, the project will impact service provision. The question is whether or not it is excessive or burdensome. In this case, all of the service providers have indicated that they are able to address the needs of the development. The subject property will have impact, but the impact is not excessive or burdensome. So that's a positive checkmark as well. Next. Is the proposed use compatible with the purpose and intent of the comp plan? The future land use map shows the subject property as industrial and medium-density residential. Even though 90 Sprayberry Road, the portion of 92 Sprayberry Road under consideration, and the tax parcel, the N5800611, are classified as medium-density residential, 21.293 of the proposed 22.07 acres, 007 acres I should say, are zoned industrial on the future land use map. The 21.293 acre tract represents tax parcel N580001002, the largest tract under consideration. So we've said no, it does not show to be compatible with the purpose and, excuse me, and intent of the comp plan. Next. Is the proposed use consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district? Staff suggested yes, the proposed use is consistent with the proposed zoning district, so that's a positive checkmark. Next. Is the proposed use supported by newer changing conditions not anticipated by the comp plan? There have been recent updates to both the zoning ordinance and the comp plan. The comp plan shows 21.293 acres of the proposed 22.007 acres as industrial on the future land use map, with the 21.293 acre tract representing tax parcel N580001002, the largest tract under consideration. The industrial category does not support residential condo units. And lastly, does the proposed use reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, and general welfare, excuse me, and right to unrestricted use of property? Staff found yes, the proposed project would reflect a reasonable balance, so a positive checkmark on that one. In summary, staff found that the development met five out of the eight standards. At their July 14th, 2020 meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding the request and voted unanimously to recommend denial of five oh. Should the council elect to recommend approval of the request, staff would recommend the following conditions to be considered that are found in the attached ordinance in your packets on page 253. The 253 would be the page number in your packets. These include staff recommended conditions along with the proffered conditions. And if I may just read this briefly, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The project will be, number one, the project will be consistent with the conceptual site plan, density, project data, amenities, proffered conditions, and architectural details as provided as part of the amended application. This application is attached heretofu by reference and specifically made a part hereof as if included herein. Two, the applicant shall also not create any nonconformities in regards to the residential dimensional requirements when splitting the tract at 92 Sprayberry Road, in parentheses, concerning items such as minimum lot size, setback requirements, and other, the other, dimensional elements found in the zoning ordinance. Three, variances resulting from the proposal will only be granted upon consideration and final approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals, including the variance for the stream buffer and setback encroachments with mitigation above and beyond the minimum detention and water quality requirements for development. Four, a minimum of two points of entrance/exit to the community shall be provided generally as shown on the conceptual site plan, attached heretofu as Exhibit C. However, a traffic study or analysis will be required to determine that the connections for the internal streets to Jefferson Street and Sprayberry Road, as shown in the concept, meet generally accepted engineering design standards, in parentheses, GDOT or ASHTO, for site distance and will accommodate the volumes of left and right turn movements. Five, the project shall consist of a maximum of 103 units, being a townhouse-designed condominium project in accordance with the requirements of Article 3, Section 3-7C of the zoning ordinance. Residential attached homes shall be a minimum of 1,300 heated square feet. Six, an amenity center inclusive of a pool, cabana with restrooms, green space, mulched walking trails, and a dog park shall be provided. Seven, landscaping and a fence shall be provided along American Avenue as shown on the attached Exhibit D. Eight, a homeowner's condominium association shall be incorporated to maintain the common areas and the amenity center areas. And finally, number nine, buildings and structures constructed in the project shall be consistent with the proffered representative architecture and exterior examples attached heretofu as Exhibit E, attached heretofu and by reference made a part hereof. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Cole regarding the report from the Planning Commission? Okay, this would be the time for the applicant to come forward and make their presentation?
Before my time starts, Mr. Mayor and council members, could I just, I've just confirmed with Ms. Tracy Donovan, the Planning Director, item number three that is on the staff suggested conditions is actually an administrative variance. We've already filled out all of the documentation, we met the requirements, it was platted prior to the exceptions that go into place, so it would not have to come before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the way it is worded in number three is not correct. So I just wanted to point that out, that it's actually administrative variance instead of Board of Zoning Appeals. So with that edit, there are no other edits I had on that, so, sorry. So I'm Melissa Griffiths with Horn and Griffiths, 32 South Court Square, Noonan, Georgia, 30263. I'm here tonight with Inline Communities. I've got Brian Musoff, Brian Aresom, we've also got Ken Wood, who's an engineer with PEC, who's helped with the plan, and Abdullah Beer with A&amp;R Engineering, who is a traffic engineer. We want to make sure that the rezoning application and all the materials, including all the proffered conditions with the additional exhibit that we just submitted within the past week, our standard constitutional letter, our development summary report, are all made part of the record. Staff has worked very hard with us on this project and we appreciate their time. I'm gonna let Brian and Ken go through the project in detail. I do have two different engineers to answer questions. Unfortunately, at the Planning Commission, there were some traffic questions that came up and we were not prepared to answer those, unfortunately. So I have two different gentlemen, so that way if you all have any questions regarding that, we'll be able to answer those tonight. I know that there have been some citizen support letters that have come in for people that were not comfortable with coming to the meeting, and we would like to reserve time for rebuttal if necessary. Thank you.
How much remaining time do we have, just so I know?
Yeah, I didn't start the clock, let's just proceed.
Okay, okay.
And I'll, and I'll cut you off if I need to.
I got you, okay. Kenneth Wood.
But I'm gonna be very lenient.
Thank you. Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. So I wanted to kind of walk you guys through, and we have a PowerPoint if it's able to get up on the screen, of kind of starting off the reason that Inline kind of looks at these communities. And I look at a lot of different ones with this style here, where we're trying to find infill development. Awesome, perfect, right. And so one of the things that pops out is always the location. And so as we, as we got into the site, some of the criteria we look at is, is where is it located? How close is it to downtown sectors? How close is it to restaurant and other services? And then what does the site look like? Is it, is it a very pretty site? Does it have certain features about it that make it a very great site once people are living there, they can enjoy it and be a place that they really want to live? And then also the access. And so the site checked all these boxes. So it's 22 acres. We're proposing the 103 units, it's mixed between front-loaded and rear-loaded townhome. And when you look at the site, it has two access points. Most of the sites we look at do not have access points that are on totally different ends of the site. And so being able to distribute the flow out from Sprayberry out to Jefferson in another different way is something we really look for. So our main entrance to the site is off of Jefferson, and we've actually just gone out there and I'll let Abdul have any questions that he can answer. And looking at exactly what were, what were the traffic issues that might be from a site distance standpoint, we're able to verify tonight that both entrances on Sprayberry as well as Jefferson have a good site distance from there. And looking at the map, this is the site, so we've walked every inch of it, and it has an existing lake on it that's very large. The existing lake has, definitely needs a little bit of love and care to get it up to standards. And so part of what we were looking at, at doing with the lake was basically repairing the spillway, repairing the, the primary that goes through there to let the water out and getting it back up to a standard. Because when you, when you get into the site, the setting is really beautiful. There's a lot of great trees that run along the tree line around the lake and also up the creek line that we'll be able to preserve as part of the development. The other thing that happened, we were going through the, the land use and selecting the site, was that it has, half of it's zoned industrial today, half of it's the RU7. And so when you look at it, it's actually not developable the way it is. And so it has to have a land use change because the industrial site, with the way the buffers work on the northwestern side, there's a creek that runs down the entire side, and then you have the lake in the middle and then a creek on that far right side. And so the RU7 is just about eaten up, and the way the small little triangle pieces still are left over that kind of form that piece, there's not much usable land if you're looking at it as two different split zonings. And so that checked another box about why it's a, it's a good piece to come in and change it to the RML and actually have a transition from the industrial back over to the residential with the attached housing. Next slide looks at, you kind of get an overview, and we actually have some measurements we can show you guys about how far we are from the existing industrial. This is the, this is the site plan as proposed, and as I talked about, kind of run through access and then all the other criteria we looked at. The access you see out the Sprayberry, we added in the existing lot there. When you look to the left, the site distance actually improved. And so we needed to get away from that creek, get away from that next intersection down. And so we added that lot in, and that was able to give us proper site distance for the site. It also gave us a distance away from that next intersection, so we're just trying to make that access point a safer access point as you come into the site. It also has a lot of great trees down there near the creek line and just to the left of that site, that entrance. And so running along that, where McBride runs in the back, gives a great tree cover that's gonna be existing throughout. And that would, that would really buffer this site from the industrial that you see on the other side. Going to the other side of the property, when you're looking at it, you have the access off of Jefferson coming up. And we have some different slides we'll show as some buffering coming into the left. But what we wanted to do, we really wanted to have that access off Jefferson be our impact access. And we talked about the impact being, when you pull into the development, that's where you'll have the amenity building, you'll have our clubhouse, you'll have the pool, and any other type of activities that we have, whether it's a fire pit or some type of bocce court out there. And then you pull into the development and then you can start seeing the way we have the houses and the rear load and the front load, depending on as you go through the development, how they're located. We're also situated around the lake, and on the rendering you can see it best. And you can see why we really wanted to pay attention to that buffer on the top for the industrial there, and then how large the lake is in the middle. And so what we would be looking at doing was having trails that would be able to wrap around the lake. The good thing about how the site sets up today that is different than most lakes we've been able to walk is there's actually a flat part on the northern side of the lake. And so it's already done for us, that section of it. So it's really not that the lake itself needs to be regraded or has issues with that. It's really just its primary features, its spillway and everything. Stormwater, we know stormwater is a really big deal. It does not appear that any of the single-family homes that are up above us have existing, like existing detention pond. And so we can tell the stormwater comes down, it kind of runs through the valley there and gets into the lake. And so part of our development, we are proposing several different ponds. We would also upgrade that lake. And so we think that by adding the stormwater that we're proposing on this would actually be a great way to reduce the amount of flows that are hitting downstream and hitting in this area, because the, most of the eastern part of this site is actually an open field. And so it does not absorb as, as much as, as if it was a tree cover like on the west. The other thing to hit on is, when you're looking at the existing site, there was a lot of abandoned roads that run through here. So we had a lot of fun doing the survey and figuring out what was, what and how it all went together. And so all the roads have been abandoned. One thing to notice, does this have the pointer, like a pointer on it? Does it actually show it?
Oh, it's actually behind me. So actually, if you see right here, that section, what that is, is today on that access point, there's actually driveways to three different homes that actually enter into the property and access the homes from the backside. And, and, and so what we are proposing is to continue that. We don't, we're not trying to change the way people access their properties. And so we're proposing that is a 16-foot access strip that allows those existing driveways to remain in that location so that they can continue to serve those three residents. And as we get into some of the more blowups, I can kind of go over exactly how that, how that feels and looks on there. Guest parking is also a large deal. Before I run back through the slide, we have 103 units. We provided on this site plan 56, so we're over 50% beside what can be parked in the garage, what can be parked in the driveway. There's an additional 56 units, 56 spaces that can be parked on the site. And so guest parking is really a big deal, and what we wanted to make sure we, we covered. These are some different amenity, kind of views of the amenity to kind of get a feel for what we're looking at for the trails around the lake, the trails up through the creek line, the male kiosk, the open areas, and the type of pool and amenity that we would plan on building. We also have, and I can let Brian talk about it, we also have a, an existing house. Actually, the lady that owns it is here, is here tonight. When you enter off of Jefferson, we're planning some fencing and landscaping on that left side so that, that, that house is buffered from our, our new access and then also figuring out how to coordinate the driveway access into behind her house there. And so this shows some of the plantings and the fencing that would go in that area. This is that blowup, just so you guys can see it, of that access point that would provide those houses so they have continued access to the property from there. And this is earlier when I was talking about the slide, just to make sure everybody is kind of aware about what our closest point is. And so if you can, you can see, that's 800 feet down to those homes in this area. On the other one, you essentially have about 590 feet to the other homes in this area coming down this way. And so with the foliage, with the lake, and when you're standing out there, I really didn't even notice that the industrial kind of in the area as you're going through there. And so with the, with the foliage and the, what we're planning on doing and the revegetation around the lake, we don't really have a concern about the proximity to the industrial and the fact that we exit out toward the residential side was really one of those. And with that, I'll call Brian up so we can walk through some of the product type with you.
Okay, Brian's gonna do engineering or traffic?
Ken's the engineer, I'm the developer.
Okay.
He's gonna go through the product. So I'm gonna go through the product real quick and introduce myself. Thank you, councilman, for having us here this evening, we appreciate it. So my name's Brian Musoff, I'm the developer of the project, one of the principals of Inline Communities. Been in the business for a long time. I ran land acquisition for John Wieland Homes and Neighborhoods for about 10 years, all the way up until five years ago when I started Inline. And have done a lot of townhome projects, really excited about this one. Ken really stole a lot of my thunder. This is a really neat site. This is a really neat site. You know, it's an ability to do something, you know, typically we're doing much more dense, you know, on a per acre standpoint. Usually you don't have a lot of really neat green spaces and ability on a townhome development to do all these open space trails and the things that we're going to be able to do. And, you know, the other thing I would say about, you know, what Ken was saying is we're sitting up above the lake, most of the site. So you're looking down the lake. It's just going to be some really beautiful views from, from these units. And so we're really excited about the opportunity to present this to you tonight. As Ken mentioned, we'll have some front entry townhomes and, and some rear entry townhomes. We've got some examples of kind of both of those here. This is probably most representative, although the, the colors I don't love. But you can see a combination of brick and stone. Some of the units are 100% brick on the front. And then we've got board and batten as well that you can see on there. And then, you know, pictures of representations of the interiors. These are going to be, you know, first class interiors, all hard surfaces on the, on the main floors as well as hard surface countertops, you know, those sorts of things. Some examples of the interiors of the bedrooms and baths as well. And so, you know, that's, that's really it as far as the architecture. And we're, you know, here that we'd like to reserve any of our time to, you know, to answer any questions you have and to, you know, respond to any other comments.
I have a question. It has to do with construction. One of the comments made early on is substantially clad in hardwood material.
Other than windows, right? You know, that's the only, you know, so as far as the cladding goes, it'll be, you know, we can change substantially to 100% clad in hardy plank, board and batten. And, you know, you know, what, what I can tell you is on average, you're probably somewhere between 25 and 50% brick or stone. So, you know, I'm, I'm fine with saying something like that as well because that, you know, that's our intention.
Yeah, because it substantially leaves a lot to the imagination.
I think my lawyer might have added that language for me. It's hard to throw under the bus.
She does have a good mind. I do know that. So, okay, that was one of my questions. The second, the things you're, you're proposing here, your commitment to beginning and finishing this project.
Certainly.
We, we are not in the business of entitling land so you can flip it.
Right.
And it turns out to be multifamily of whatever.
Sure.
In this density.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've got a, something we didn't approve here. So how do we step through that?
So, you know, I'm not a vertical construction guy. I am a lot developer. So I am developing lots and I've been speaking with, you know, multiple builders who are very interested in this location and this site plan. They all have a wonderful city. And there's, as you know, higher and higher demand. So other than, you know,
So you?
You know, other, other than the, you know, the financial, you know, we've got the equity and the debt lined up to do this project and put, you know, put these lots on the ground. I just need to choose who, you know, who's going to be the, the best building partner for us, you know, going forward. But, you know, we're, we're a developer who, you know, develop lots for builders.
So you will flip it to somebody else? You will flip the lot? You're not going to build the project?
We are not going to, I, I do not build homes. I'm not a home builder. No, sir.
Some questions that, I'll open it up to council. How about that? Let council have an opportunity.
I have a question. And I'm a bit confused. I, I've heard the term townhome and condominium. Are those both the same or are they two different things or what?
So these will be townhome style for sure. I, I haven't used the word condominium, but I did hear that in the staff report.
Yeah, okay. So that, so they're going to be owned individually like a single family?
Typically, the way they are platted is the land underneath the townhome is owned by the prop, by that property owner. And then there's a easement on all the other property that's shared by the homeowners association. My understanding of condominium is the condominium, the condominium association would actually own the land. You would only own the inside of your walls. You wouldn't own the land underneath you. So this would be a townhome development.
But they will be individually owned townhomes?
Correct, sir.
Fee simple ownership?
Fee simple.
Okay. And you, I would imagine if you're going to flip them to a builder that you're not, you're not sure who that builder is yet? Or do you know that builder?
I, I don't know for sure.
Okay. So you don't know if the builder will, will do an HOA on-site?
I, I think one of the requirements is there will be an HOA management. You know, there will be, there'll have to be an HOA here which will manage the, the neighborhood once they're substantially built up, built out.
On-site or remote?
The manage, the HOA management company, they're typically remote.
Right. Okay, well, so we send out these letters and you're, you saw them as part of the package. And it goes to noon utilities and it goes to public safety and it goes to different people. And this particular time, we got a letter back from the school system that was a little bit different than what we generally get back from the school system. Some very pointed questions. Typically, the letter from the school system says, if you do this, we're going to do our best to make it happen and we're going to, we're going to do what we need to do. But this time, I'll just quote from the letter, "Due to the high-density housing in the area of the, in the area of the proposal, school capacity is an ongoing concern. Many of the schools serving that area are at or near capacity. If approved, we would request that the developer provide us with advance notice of the following information for our planning purposes." These are the questions. What is the construction schedule of the project?
Certainly. So assuming approval, we're looking at probably four months plus to get an LDP that puts a starting development kind of in the rainiest time of year. So we're probably, probably pushes development to early spring would be my recommend, would be my, would be most likely. You're talking about anywhere from six to nine months to have a final plat. So you're talking a solid year plus before we would start the first homes for vertical construction. Those take anywhere from 120 to 150 days to complete from the time you start. So you're pushing 18 to 20 months before the very first units are ready for moving.
Sounds about right. What, what is the, next question, what is the proposed build-out time? Do you have an absorption rate?
Sure, yeah. I mean, you know, for something like this, someone's going to perform a three a month. You know, no one's doing anything for less, you know, less than two a month. At this price point, someone's going to want to be at three a month. So, you know, less than three years.
And will it be built in phases or is this an all?
It will be all developed at one time. And that's really, you, you've got to do it from an infrastructure standpoint on this site. You don't really have a choice to phase this.
Okay, so is any of this market senior citizen? That's an important question. The school system?
There will be nothing age restricted here. So yes, I'm, I'm certain there will be plenty of empty nesters that choose to live here. But there, there will nothing that will be restricted only for, you know, people who are over a certain age.
Okay, so do you know the width of these homes?
Yes, they're drawn at 20 feet.
They're 20-foot width?
Correct.
Okay, so, and so are the, so all bedrooms up?
Correct.
There are, are they two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
Three-bedroom units.
All three-bedroom?
Correct. I mean, I think we may have a two-bedroom version, but they're similar size. So I think most people are going to want to do a three-bedroom version.
Okay. Do you have a written agreement with the neighbor that you were going to do the improvements with? For, you mentioned a neighbor on the corner.
So what, are you talking about Ms. Arnold on the corner of American Avenue?
If I may jump in. We added additional proffered conditions with the landscaping and the fencing. We were not able to meet in person with Ms. Arnold due to her work schedule. So we were not able to work out a written agreement. So what we did is we did a letter with additional proffered conditions for the planting and for the fencing that we had, had been suggested at the planning commission meeting. So if, if we need to do a written agreement, we're happy to do that. We just, we're not able to physically meet with her to do that. So that's why we added as a proffered condition with that exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question related to your, the possibility of the builder. With the, with the 18 to 24 months for start time after everything. So I have, are, does that include you finding the builder? Or the, the clock starts when you secure the builder?
The, the clock will start the, the moment we're approved.
So where, so you really don't, you have a number of builders?
I've got a number of builders who've made offers that would, that would work and I, but I have not determined.
So what would be the estimated timeframe that you're going to secure that builder?
Right now, the market's really good. So I don't know that I'm going to rush to making that decision, you know, based on, on where they're at. I think they're, what they're going to be willing to pay for lots is going to go up in the next few months. So I may, we may, based on the LOIs that we've got in hand, determine to go forward with our development and then make a determination as we go. That's where my head is today.
Okay, so you're not going to rush into it. I understand, I understand that. So what does that equate to as time-wise, not, not rushing into it, so to speak?
I would say in the next six months, for sure, we'll know who it is. But I think we're, I think what we're planning here, not I think, I know what we're planning here works for multiple guys.
Okay, thanks.
At some point, I would like to, to hear the discussion on the traffic, particularly on Sprayberry Road. I don't know if this is the time or not, but I don't want it to go by without hearing that.
If that's your question, this is the time.
Since, yeah, since the, that wasn't addressed during the planning commission, I'd like to hear all the engineering that would have been presented. Can we hear that now?
Sure.
For the traffic and other engineering.
So this is Abdul Amir with A and R Engineering Traffic Engineering Firm.
Good evening, Abdul Amir, A and R Engineering. I'm a traffic engineer. Briefly, I'm working on a more detailed traffic study as called for in the recommended condition, which will evaluate both the access points in, in greater detail along with traffic numbers and make appropriate recommendations to design them in a safe manner per standards. But my preliminary analysis, looking at the sites on the ground, measuring some site distances, are that, you know, Jefferson Street access has adequate side distance in both directions. I've measured it today. And, and so I think it'll be a safe location for entrance and exit. And I concur with the staff analysis, which states that majority of the traffic from this development will use Sprayberry Street access. And, and I think that is accurate. As far as the access, proposed access on Sprayberry Road, there was some side distance issue there initially where the access was closer to McBride as it, as the road goes downhill towards the railroad tracks. But now that they have moved the driveway location up the hill some, looking at it, it appears like the location is going to be safe enough. But that is again, something to be verified through much more detailed analysis and side distance profiles that Ken and I will perform. So we are working towards making sure we design these driveways in a safe manner, no matter what. Because the staff required that as part of the conditions and we're obligated to do it. So we'll follow all the standards and demonstrate that the access points will be safe. We'll install right turn lanes, D cell lanes and things of that sort where necessary. We'll be happy to answer any specific questions you have.
Did I understand correctly during, early in the presentation, the internal roads are all going to be private?
Yes, that's what we had planned on.
So if it's a private street, is that just the repaving requirements? Is that just added into the HOA amount for every month?
It is. We, we typically, kind of all over the southeast, do, do that as mostly private roads with townhomes. It's part of the, everybody pays into the HOA and there's a, a certain amount that's set aside.
So to whose standards do you build those private roads?
I mean, you have to, I think, I think your code says that private roads have to be built to public standards in terms of the spec.
Mr. Phillips?
That's correct.
So.
If I may, I, I'm a little confused. Is this a condominium project?
It's a condominium association, the condominium statute would require.
It's a, it's a.
All right, he says no, you say yes.
It cannot be a fee simple townhome project unless it is built on a publicly dedicated road.
Correct.
They are not building a publicly dedicated road. They are, are building condominiums. And because of the topography, the wetlands, the other unbuiltables, to, to be able to get their densities, they're building in a condominium fashion which would fall under the condominium statutes, which we're very familiar with. That's the only way they can actually build this. If they're trying to build it as a fee simple, that where you own a lot that fronts, fronts on a private road, this particular concept plan doesn't all work.
Well, and, but that's what he just said.
Well, I think they're interchanging.
Own the land.
I guess, I guess my understanding, and you correct me, you correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is it will be fee simple ownership because they will own the land underneath them. So they will.
That's a condominium.
They will be fee simple. Okay, my understanding is condominium, you don't under, you don't own the land, you just own inside the walls. And so this will be fee simple ownership.
That's my, yeah, that's my standard of the condominium statute.
Yeah, I think it's two, yeah, I think it's two different things. So I think it's fee simple ownership, but I think what you're saying.
Condominium is fee simple ownership.
Okay.
But it's only of the airspace, not of the land. You're only conveying the unit. You're not conveying the underlying land.
Right, we would be under, we would be, my assumption and preference, and the way we do this, and we do it in a lot of different municipalities, is you're conveying just the land underneath the home and then the HOA owns all the other, all the common areas, streets.
That's not our ordinance.
That's not, that's not the definition of condominium. That's a fee simple ownership of property. Condominium Association owns it just as you said.
Right.
The airspace. The condominium association, not the HOA, in this particular case, owns the dirt.
Right.
But never.
Yeah, we would like to plat these as individual.
Right.
Units, you know, units. And they're not, you know, you're not plating the driveway with a lot. You know, there isn't, there, I agree with you, there's not a lot with frontage and all that sort of thing. But on the final plat, there are units, each individual unit.
Allows that on a private road.
Now, if you're plating a lot, it has to be on a publicly dedicated street for all reasons.
That's right. So they can't sell those lots fee simple if it's on a private road. Okay.
By the ordinance, it's going to be a true condominium product.
I, I know that.
Is there any need to go any further tonight on this? Because it sounds like it needs to come back to us with a little more study. I don't know.
I, I would agree because it sounds like there's, even, even as staff said, that the overall site plan is still being refined. It's not like there's a lot of refinement to go, a lot more, kind of congeal the plan.
I would, I would like to, I think, I think I agree with you. And instead of closing the public hearing and ask for, asking for a motion and creating, you know, that scenario, I'd, I'd rather suggest to council that we continue the public hearing. Get a motion to continue, in all fairness, continue the public hearing. And, Mr. Sears, we do, do we need to do that to a certain date?
Yes.
Okay. Until our, what is our second meeting in September? Somebody tell me that date.
Twenty-first?
The 21st, September the 21st. And before I ask for a motion for that, I'm going to ask for Ms. Griffey's to come forward.
Twenty-second, Mr. Mayor.
That's, I was going to say, well, I was going to say it's not the 21st.
Okay, the 22nd. Do you need a moment to confer with your clients to make sure that they've got enough time between now and the 22nd of September?
Yes, sir, would you give me just a minute to step outside with my clients if you don't mind?
And it'll be just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Because I've just got two things and you know how fast.
Mr. Phillips, I have in my calendar the 21st. Did, did we, didn't we change that? Was there some reason we changed it to the 21st on that day?
I don't have that particular schedule in front of me.
Okay, I just want to make sure we actually are on the 21st or the 22nd?
Okay, okay. So it isn't Tuesday, it's a Monday. Good call.
Okay, thank you.
They have a calendar in front of them.
All right, I have a question. Keith?
Yes.
We're going to defer till then and what's the questions that we're get, to getting answered? What are we waiting for?
I'd, I'd like to know whether or not they think they're building a fee simple ownership or a condominium complex.
Yeah, I would like to know exactly how many automobiles you can stack up on Sprayberry Road and how many times a day that that driveway is going to be closed off due to a stacking situation.
So level of service.
Yeah, the traffic. Because, because it didn't seem like that was even addressed adequately.
Okay, Ms. Griffey?
Yes, sir, it sounds like we, even with the added getting level of service before, is it the 21st or 22nd? What did y'all decide? They moved it to Monday night, the 21st? Okay, that'd be just, that'd be just fine. And so in the meantime, I will get with Mr. Sears and make sure that we're not improperly using the, interchanging words like townhome and condominium. I will get Mr. Sears and work all of that out before we come back, before you. And I, I mean, that'd be fine. So if you're just continuing it, we will have time to then respond.
Okay, so I have a motion and a sec, do I have a second?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion to 21st to continue the public hearing.
A motion and a second. A motion and a second. Mr. Sears?
There are some people here who wanted to speak, and if they can't make it on the 21st, I think it'd be appropriate to let them speak.
Okay. That would be fine. Are you in support or opposition?
Opposition. I'm one of them.
Okay. Well, hold on just a second. So, before I entertain this motion, I'm going to ask for anyone who is in opposition to come forward, take an opportunity this evening to make your case heard. Thank you, Mr. Sears. Yeah, you, yeah. You go to, the sound system won't pick you up from back there. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Loretta Erin Stinson. I'm a homeowner on Jefferson Street. Been there for 23 years. I don't know the density of what they're looking at at the traffic, but for me, my concern is the traffic on Jefferson Street in front of my house. It's a busy road and on Sprayberry. When that train comes, the traffic on Sprayberry comes all the way back to Jefferson Street, so it's tied up. So, I want them to look at that, because like I say, I've been there 23 years. He looked at it today. I see it every day. So, that is one of my concerns.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else who is opposed to the project? If you, this is your opportunity to come forward and speak, please. If you'll state your name for the record.
Michael Charles Johnson. I'm with her, because I stay right on North Street, which is intersecting with West Street. And that traffic, because when they be trying to turn left, it's bagged all the way around. You can't get out there anyway, because we blocked in on both sides. We blocked in on Sprayberry Road and Jefferson Street. So, there's no access. Our street is a one-way street anyway. So, we only got one access point, which is West Street. And that's just my, you know.
I understand. Thank you. We appreciate you being, yes, ma'am. If you'll come forward and state your name, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Annette Teagle, and I'm his next-door neighbor, and I know where Loretta stays at. And what are we going to do about when the buses start rolling? School starts in, because my granddaughter and grandson catch the bus right there at North Street, on the back end, right there at Jefferson Parkway. And sometime you coming around that curve, and the buses is stopped, a lot of people just keep on rolling in. So, if they build those townhomes, where's the access where the kids going to get on the bus at? If they come around where Loretta stays, around that curve, it is going to be impossible when the buses stop and children got to cross the road to get on the bus. That is my concern.
Appreciate your observation. Thank you, Ms. Teagle. Anyone else in opposition? This is your opportunity to come forward. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. My name is Shannon Arnold, and I live right there at the corner of where they want to bring the driveway. I live at 48 Jefferson Street. And my concern is how much traffic that, you know, we're going to get up and down on the side, because I can stand on my porch, on my deck, and I can really just two-arm lynch touch the cars, because that going to be a lot of traffic there. I mean, I talked to them, they're going to build a fence up, but still, when I come out, and like they say, you coming up or cars coming around that curve, that's a bad interest. I mean, buses come, I'm a bus driver, and when those buses stop, people do not stop. You know, even when I come out of the driveway to Jefferson Street, you got to be very careful, because people are not paying attention.
Right.
You know, they, they're going to get you, either way, they're going to get you coming down or coming up.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. We appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, could we have somebody from staff point out on the map exactly where they're talking about? It's not real clear, and I'm not sure if everybody.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Cole.
Wrong, wrong.
Mr. Cole. We appreciate your, thank you very much.
It's the work for everybody.
I appreciate it.
Where she's talking about is right.
North Street and Jefferson Street.
Right.
Is she lives, the last speaker, she lives there?
No, that's not where we're talking about. Your North Street curves around and comes out. See where it says East Street? It's a little bit to the right. I think that's the area. Is that correct?
Oh, okay.
So, you only got one way in and one way out. That's it.
That's right.
Yeah. I believe Ms. Arnold lives.
Now, you're saying one way in and out, way out of North Street onto West Street?
West Street. It's just one way comes in on East Street, then it goes around, it goes on North Street. I mean, it comes on West Street, then goes around on North Street, then gets East Street. That's the only way to come in.
Chief, are you aware of that traffic flow there? Can you explain any of it?
Right here, I know there's bottlenecked. That's the way I usually go home, is around through here. These are really smaller streets.
Yeah, they're real small.
That are very congested, would be congested, yet a lot of traffic. This mirror for the two vehicles to pass, and right in here, I believe it's really like a room enough for one vehicle. So, it is tied in these streets back here.
And tied where they're coming out on.
And they're two-way streets.
Yeah.
It's just long which we had to rezone for one way, because the street is so narrow.
That's on the east street.
Yeah, it's so, it's so narrow.
That is one way about it.
It's so narrow right there, because it got like a, it's got a hill. And once you come around that curve, by taking it down that hill, somebody turning in there, whatever, you know, that's it.
Okay. Well, that answers my question.
Walls right here on the east side of them.
And that's where the school bus pick the kids up. Yeah, right there.
The sound system will not pick you up if you're sitting out there. So, if you go, if you have a comment, you'll need to come up to the monitor.
I apologize for taking over.
That's okay. It's a good conversation.
The school bus picks the kids up, right here in that curve. They pick them up in that curve. So, it got to be some kind of, you know, that's a dangerous spot right there. If you come out in the morning and see the buses, either way you come, you come down, and if that sun is shining, that's a bad area.
So, you're saying the bus pick up at the intersection of North and East, or East and Main, Jefferson?
East and Main.
Okay.
But they have to walk out onto Jefferson Street to get picked up.
May I ask a question? This young lady who just left, since you drive a bus, correct?
Yes.
Has the school board discussed anything as an alternative to move that stop, since it's such a dangerous thing, or is this?
Either way they move, they tried to move it up to Sprayberry and Jefferson. That's still the bad area, because cars are turning, they're turning lane. Then they tried to move it down. Where I live at, when you come around that curve, either way, it's still not going to work.
So, it doesn't matter wherever you, it's bad, no matter how, left, right, or whatever?
Right.
Okay.
What is the speed limit along there?
It is 35.
35? I'm just wondering if they ought to.
But people come through, they be going about 55, because the, my wall shakes. I'm serious. The trucks, tractor trailers, a lot of tractor trailers come through, and I can be sitting in there, the picture frames on the wall just shakes, because they be going so fast.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Okay. Anyone else in opposition? All right. So, I saw the applicant's hand go up for someone in this.
I was just.
If you'll, you'll need to come. So, I'm going to give just a second for rebuttal here. Ms. Griffey, you're going to have an opportunity to come back.
Right. I just wanted to clarify real quickly the traffic pattern. Okay, okay. I was just going to try, just clarify that. Agreed, chief, that we've got, you know, tight streets over here. Our development doesn't dump into any of those streets, coming or going. You'll never be, you know, none of these residents, residents agree that they are very small and they're, they're substandard for what, anything that would get built today, but we will not be adding any traffic to those particular structures.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to continue this public hearing until our nightly meeting at 6:30 on the 21st of September. No other questions or comments. I'm going to call the questions, and I will say, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. We will continue this. The time clock will start over when we reconvene. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda this evening is Heritage Ridge Neighborhood requests to place signs at their entrance to Little Fairway Road for garage sale on October the 10th. Signs to be posted week prior.
So moved.
Motion second to approve the request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The next is Mount Sinai Baptist Church requests to close Level A Street between Boone and Nelson for movie night on September the 4th, from 8 until 8 p.m. till 11.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Alexander to take us into an executive session for real estate.
Yes, sir. I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA 50-14-4, and pursuant to advice by the city attorney, for the purpose of discussing real estate, and that we, in open session, adopt a resolution, authorize and direct the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA 50-14-4, and that this body ratify the actions of the council taken in closed session, and confirm that the subject matters of this closed session were within exception permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion is second. We move into executive session for real estate. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The regular meetings adjourn.